Ladies and gentlemen, we get this meeting started. If you can please stand in the public. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have, are there any changes to the agenda?
I have none.
I want to table 6.2 for right now.
Six, 6.2? Okay. Any other items, council?
I want to pull 5.14 and table it for a later date. That's the one on the epoxy floor out at the water plant. I'm going to go take a look at that and see if we can do it cheaper.
I have one more item as well. Let me see. The, the, I'm not sure which item it is. I'd have to actually sit here for a second. The item for the flooring out there at the airport, is there any way that we can table that until we get a few more quotes? Or estimates?
Yes, you can pull that and table it if you'd like.
See, it just seems a little bit high. Okay, any other items? Here we have a motion to approve the, the agenda with the changes.
I motion to approve the agenda with the changes.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Hitchcock?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
And I vote aye.
Okay, next, we're going to move on to, let me read this. Awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. Right now, we have none. So we'll move on to citizens' comments. This section of the agenda allows members of the public to address the city council on any item within the jurisdiction of the council. Members of the public, when recognized by the mayor, should come forward to the lectern, identify themselves, and use the microphone. Comments are normally limited to three minutes in accordance with the state open meeting laws. No action will be taken by the city council this evening, and all items will be referred to staff for follow-up and report. Citizens' comments submitted in writing to the city clerk by 5:00 PM on the day of the city council meeting shall be distributed to the council and included on record, however, will not be read. So our next item is, uh, public hearings. Looks like we have none. So we will move on to the consent calendar. Would anybody like to, to speak on the public hearing part or public comment?
Good evening, Hilda Crawford, and I'm just reminding everybody that we're still having our In-N-Out Burger, um, event going on at the library. You have one week left if you want to bring your little ones, and if you want to get them a cheeseburger or hamburger from In-N-Out Burger. Again, it's just 15 books that they have to read. For each five that they, they read, they get a little, uh, gift card. And they can go in and you guys can take them to Hanford and get them a In-N-Out Burger or Cheeseburger. And the last date is Saturday, the fifteenth of this month. And you can still read to them at home. They're allowed to read the books if they have, well, all children should have books in their home. But if, they can even read the ones at home. So it doesn't have to be library cards, I mean, library books necessarily. It can be books that they have at home. And also, uh, the last week of April, we will be celebrating National, National Library Week. It starts the 25th of April and it ends on the 29th of, starts on a Tuesday, April 25th, and it ends, uh, Saturday, April 29th. We haven't come out yet with, we kind of haven't done a flyer yet, but we'll, that's coming, and hopefully, we can get a lot of people to participate. I know Tuesday evening will be my fun eats, and then Wednesday, um, not positive, but I know on Saturday, we're going to have, um, the fire department has committed to come by. I did specifically ask for Murphy. And then I'm getting, I'll hear back from the police department. I did contact them, and they'll get back to me on Monday. So just to let you know that, that's the events that are going to be happening at the Colinga District Library. And we'll see you then, Lonnie, when you can make it to the library.
Thank you. Anybody else? Counsel? Okay. Now we'll move on to the consent calendar. Are any items that you guys would like to discuss, or you guys like to make a motion and approve the consent calendar as read?
I'd like to pull eight, 13, 15, and then, um, I need to abstain on 18 and 19. So if we can take that out and vote on them separately.
Repeat those numbers, please.
Eight, 13, 15, 16, and then 18 and 19 I need to abstain on.
Any other items?
Five, oh, five and...
5.5?
Yeah, 5.5, and 5.4.
Okay, any other items? Okay, we'll move on to the first item, uh, item number 5.4. Councilman Ramirez.
I just, I just want, uh, I read it, but it's like, get a kind of picture of like what's really like going on and stuff.
So there really isn't anything going on, so that property in 5.4, the Future College Crossings, is the old Church of Christ property. Um, it's across from Campus Drive-In, and it's where the Community Pride sign is. And so the church was torn down, and a developer owns the property. Um, it's the same developer who did the strip mall in Lemoore where Starbucks is. And so initially, pre-COVID, they had, um, tenants to occupy all the spaces in the strip mall that they wanted to build. And then COVID happened, and that sort of fell apart. So they still own the property. They are moving forward. They continue to attend events and market the property. Um, they have no confirmed tenants at this time, which is why they haven't started construction. But they did just have their architect design two separate buildings on the property, one for a Dutch Bros and one for a Chipotle. Um, and so they're marketing them to those two, um, businesses. There is no confirmation, so I'm not saying that we're getting a Chipotle and a Dutch Bros. I'm just saying that their architect has designed buildings for those two, and that's who they're marketing them to. Um, I did have a meeting with the real estate broker for Chipotle on February 27th, who confirmed that Colinga is an approved location for a Chipotle. They're just trying to find an ideal site.
Any, any like, any expectations of when they're trying to build something? Like, just to build, I mean, I'm not saying just the Chipotle or Dutch Bros, but just any kind of...
They won't build until they have signed letters of intent from tenants, so there's not really a timeline. They continue to market it. When I went to ICSC Monterey in, I think that was the end of February, uh, they were there marketing the property. Um, they're also going to ICSC Las Vegas, so they're marketing it, and then they are, um... So the developer who has it, they are called Retail California, and they have the property there where Costco is in Hanford, so they're very well-known. And aside from them marketing the property, they have people just come to them wanting to do business because they own so many properties. So I know they are actively marketing it, but to be able to tell you when there will be something there, I don't know.
Thank you.
And then the next item is 5.5, so that, that's all, you had the two tied together, right, on both lots?
Yeah.
So, sorry, so 5.5, the only difference is that is a different property. So that's the old Kmart property, and, um, we have a new developer who's taking that over. And they went to committee for tractor supply on Monday and got approval. However, there's some issues with rent amounts. So again, I'm not saying that we're getting a tractor supply, but that's who they're in negotiations with. That is public information now that they have gone to their committee, but they have to agree on rent amounts. And so if they are successful in doing that, that would be the anchor store. And then some of the other tenants who are interested in occupying will occupy that space, but nothing is a done deal. I cannot tell you what will be going into the Kmart property, if anything, at this point.
Well, from what I understand, all this planning just started the beginning of this week, correct? The talk, the talks of what they were, where they're going to move forward, or how they're going to move forward?
No, um, so they started in February.
Yes, Mary.
Sorry, Mary Jones. So does that mean everything else is moot? It's all gone?
The other businesses that were going to be there?
Yeah, the whole other plans, it's just...
Not entirely. So the new developer is in contact with the previous developer, and so the site plan was already approved for Grocery Outlet. A site plan was submitted for, uh, let me see, I have it on here. Um, so Grocery Outlet's plans were submitted and approved. Uh, Five Below submitted plans, and the city returned them for corrections, and Ross submitted plans, and they were returned for corrections. So they could still, um, move forward with those retailers, especially because they already have site plans for them, or they may have different retailers altogether.
So to get it straight, the major difference is Grocery Outlet?
Would no longer be there, but the tractor supply. Grocery Outlet will likely still be there, but they won't be considered the anchor store.
Okay. Okay.
Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on to item number 5.8. Councilman Vosberg.
Yeah, um, I just think that, uh, during the time of drought, that we're looking for ways to, you know, really make it to where there will be future proof. And I think that, um, I think this is a good idea in theory, but I think that we need to be careful on something like this because what it'll do is, uh, in the future years that we're, we will have, if we do have water, um, of course, all of these, if we had new, uh, you know, commercial, industrial, residential developments, that would be our water customers. And right now, with us, I think we're going to get 100% of our water allotment. That's my personal opinion. Um, but we'll need to sell that water, and selling them to these exact customers is our highest maker. And so I think that, that, um, we want to push conservation in certain areas and understanding, but I don't think we want to cut off the ability for us to have future water customers at these levels. And so I'd just like to think if maybe we could, um, uh, table this item and have kind of like a compromise, and maybe have staff, uh, look at ways that we could utilize this item, uh, so that we could get the idea of what Councilman Atkinson wanted, but at the same time, uh, keep it open for future customers. And I, so I don't know how that's done, but I, I'm just wondering if we could do something like that.
What kind of compromises are you looking for?
So I, I don't have anything off the cuff in my head, and so that's why I was just going to table it and see if we could bring it back. And, uh, maybe we could, uh, get some ideas moving, you know, with staff. If council had ideas, uh, we could, you know, push those to staff, and if staff had ideas, they could push them back, and then we could bring this back with some options. But I understand this is your item, so I'd...
I guess I'm just looking for what your direction is.
So it, just to table it and just to see if we could, if we could find some, uh, some, uh, some good ways. I didn't even know if it was, if it was allowed, I mean, if council would be into tabling such a thing. So I wanted to bring it forward first to ask for that, and then go to the drawing board and see how we could, you know, make, maybe, uh, put in percentages of how much they could have.
And if you don't mind, um, there is the Model Water Efficiency Landscape Ordinance that's already been adopted by the state, that the, the city has had to adopt by reference. So hence, you see the very small patches of lawns that are, um, installed as part of new development projects because there is limitations on your kind of what they call a water budget. So we do enforce that on new developments, so you do see that. Um, where this type of policy could go further is where it restricts that, where you saw that a lot of these neighbors would, I mean, a lot of these, uh, neighborhoods would basically expand that grass to the full front yard after the, after the project closed out. Because they weren't allowed to by, from the city's standpoint, to expand that grass. But then after they basically owned it, the house closed, and it was all cleared, they would let that, let the grass expand, or they would just plant all new grass in the front yard.
So maybe that's something we could change to not allow that in the future, but still allow the patches.
Or a percentage.
Percentages. That way, we could still make it look decent, but we could get also what you're talking about.
If you're, if you guys are wanting to actually see what it'll look like, the very farthest corner, northeast corner of Positjene, uh, go look at the houses in there, and they have the, certain houses have those small patched yards, and some of them have started to let them grow and added more to the yard. Some of them have gone to...
We can bring back information if, if that would help too.
All right, we can table it. I'm going to call you later.
Thank you. Next item is 5.13. Uh, Councilman Vosberg.
Okay, so I definitely know that we need this. Um, this is for the purchase and authorization of the, um, the fire control system. And, uh, what I'm thinking here is, is that we have a, you know, the budget's coming up soon, and, uh, I would love to table this item until we understand where the budget's going as well. Because, you know, we're, I, we don't even know where the budget is, and this was an unbudgeted expense. And part of the, the thing that I would like to see in this new budget is that we have put aside maybe even money out of the, uh, reserve account, moved into a maintenance account, so that we could have, uh, maintenance, uh, for unbudgeted expenses like this, so that we, at the end of the year, that we aren't going to be, um, you know, looking in the negative. I understand we need it. I'm not against it. I'm not trying to pull it because, hey, we don't need to get this. I'm just want to make sure that with the budget moving forward, that, uh, you know, we're, it could look pretty bad.
Yeah, and I'm not saying this to contradict that because I'm fine with council waiting, and we had talked about this before the meeting, is there's no perfect time to do it. So if you want to put it off, we can put it off. I just want everybody to understand the potential consequence of putting it off. So that control system is a requirement for the jail at the police department. And so we found out the lead time, from the time that we say yes, we want to move forward with this, it's about 90 days out. So if the system fails again, as it has in the past, and the current system, the parts are no longer available and the system's obsolete, then our jail will be closed for at least 90 days until we have the new system in place.
That was 90 days to receive the parts.
Correct.
And then it still has to be installed, so it could be longer.
And the system is working as we sit here right now. So it's not like it's urgent and the jail is closing now. It's just a gamble of when the system goes out, we cannot fix it. We have to replace it.
So another idea is to take the money out of the reserves, since it's an unbudgeted item. I've got no problems with that either.
Is there any way we can look into grants to help cover some of this in the future?
We can look into grants, um, but it, again, it would delay it. And so if we are looking into grants and then applying for them, and then waiting to hear if we got approval or not, because the grants won't reimburse us for things that we've already spent money on, so we'd have to wait to find out if we were awarded the grant, which would then further delay the project.
Okay, I got a question for Chief Garza. If the jail shuts down for 90-plus days, what kind of impact would that have on you besides having to leave town or having someone transport for you?
That means that most of the individuals will have to be cited and released back in the community, or be transferred to the Fresno County Jail.
Um, aren't we already doing that? And the max that people can stay in our jail is, what, 24 hours anyways?
Correct. So in other words, no one will be staying in the, in the jail anymore.
No, what he's saying is, is they would just cite him and let him go. They wouldn't even be able to bring him to the jail. And the severe ones, they would have no place to actually hold them until they're taken away. I think we should, we should try to find some way in the budget to get this done because if it shuts down the jails, it's, it's not good for the citizens here. It's really not.
So we're 90 days out right now, right? I mean, so I definitely want to get this done, and like I said, I don't care if we pay out of the reserves. I would just like to make a statement that we should pay it out of the reserves if we're going to do that. Um, but I also want to let it be known that our people are only staying in this jail for 24 hours unless it's a weekend, and most of them should be being transported anyways. But that doesn't take away from this needing to be fixed. It absolutely needs to be fixed. I'm just saying how we fix it, whether it comes from the budget, is it an unbudgeted expense, or whether or not it comes from the reserve fund, to me, just makes a difference. I'd like to see it come from the reserves.
It, so if we're 90 days out already, it doesn't really matter if we pass it today or not. If we pass it today, and it goes down tomorrow, we're 90 days out. So if it does happen to go down, why don't we bring it back then during council, and then we can pass it then? At least, that's what I would say. Because it's not going to matter. If, if it goes down tomorrow, 90 days out. We're in the same position we're in now.
How often do they come in and inspect, uh, the jail?
It's a yearly inspection, yearly.
So we, so we actually do have a little bit of time, or did they give you a, a timeline of when we had to get it done?
No, the next time it fails, we are required to shut it down without them doing an inspection.
Okay, so we could wait until our budget and adjust it if we had to. What, what's, what's your recommendation? I don't get it done, but what's your, what's your actual recommendation? Wait and see if we can budget it in? That way, it's taken care of?
It's whatever you decide, council.
Okay, we have a citizen out here. What's the cost for this repair? Potential cost? Okay, it's roughly about 43,000 for the repair, so... So where would you, where would council like to bring this back?
I'd like to make a motion that we do this and we pay it out of the reserve.
We have a second?
A second.
Get roll call, please. Five, uh, 5.13. And this, this isn't just for the jail. This is all the buildings, just so the citizens know.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Councilman Hitchcock?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
And I vote aye.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item, um, 5.15. Uh, Councilman Vosberg.
Sorry. Um, so basically, I just want to inform the citizens that, uh, items like this, you know, this is a problem that we have with the water treatment plant. Pretty much has to be done. Um, if not, you know, it can cause detrimental things. But I want everyone to know that when your water rates go up, it's because of things like this that happen. And this is stuff that we can't... happen. And this is stuff that we can't plan on. This is maintenance that, uh, you know, hopefully we have moving forward and we're doing. And when things unfortunately fail, uh, this is, it goes into the municipal funds. And those municipal funds, a lot of it's all bonded up. And, uh, you know, when we're looking at water rates, this is something that I want people to understand, that these costs, this is a significant cost. And when we talk about funds, rarely do we talk about the municipal fund as, oh my goodness, it's mostly like, well, the general fund is what we're worried about. But then lately, we've had massive increases on all of our accounts. You know, water, sewer, all these type of things. And this type of expense adds to that. And so, uh, I just wanted to add that in. That's it.
Yeah, the system that they're, that they're looking at, we've had it, the city's had this system for quite a while. I mean, like, probably thirty, forty-plus years. Uh, Jared back there works for the, the city water plant might have a little bit of insight. But it's, they've been repairing as much as they possibly can, it's gotten to the point where it's time to replace. So, it is, it is a little pricey. They've got some estimates and stuff to go by. But it's, it's a necessary thing for, this goes into the flocculators? The clarifier basin? Okay. Yeah. Um, if, if the citizens would ever like to go out there, they can come down to City Hall and set up an appointment to actually go out there and look at the water plant and see some of the, the processes that they have out there and exactly what they're having to do to get through so we can actually get clean water, even though some of the damages there that they can't repair. So. Would you guys like to do anything with this item, or just, it was just discussion?
I'm just pulling it, just to make that comment, that, uh, I campaigned on not raising rates across the board. And so, things like this repairs could be looked at in the future as raising a rate, cause, you know, things like that have to happen. And so I just wanna preemptively tell people that this is something that has to be done. This is, you know, a thing that, this has to be done. There's no way around it. I'm not saying this is gonna raise your rates, but I'm just saying that when you spend a hundred thousand dollars on something, it has to come from somewhere, so.
Anybody else have any questions on that item? Okay, we'll move on to the next one. Uh, item five sixteen, uh, Councilman Vosberg. Or five sixteen, sorry.
Okay, so, on this item, uh, I've done a lot of research on this, talked to a lot of people, talked to staff. Um, when this program was in its infancy, I think I was involved in it. Um, so my thing is, is that we're talking about selling water after we just got done buying water, for eighteen hundred dollars an acre foot, I think it was. And, uh, of course, we're gonna be selling it a lot cheaper than that, but of course, it's gonna be a different kinda scenario than that. But, making a nexus to this scenario to where we're gonna be selling water, I wanna make sure, because part of the reason for selling this water is that we can, you know, have our water fund, uh, make more money. Well, the very best way that we make money with our water fund is selling it to our residential customers. And so, I'm, I'm fine with this. I would like to see staff, um, negotiate the price in terms, uh, with this. I know there's a contract on the table, but I'd like to send, uh, staff to negotiate with this. And attached to that, I'd also like to remove all the water restrictions. Because that's the number one way we're going to get our water fund moving, is to let people water. And so if we let people water, it will absolutely have a huge impact. And so right now, we only have a couple restrictions left. But I haven't washed my house or my concrete in probably four years. And I know there's a lot of people that wanna wash off their driveway, wash off their house. And then I was just talking to a, an elderly person the other day, and she was telling me that she hardly ever can water because she doesn't wanna water at six o'clock at night and have to go back in and out, because she just, she's gonna go to bed at eight o'clock. And so, I think that since we're, I think, I'm almost positive, we're gonna get a hundred percent of our allocation. Uh, and if we're talking about selling water, I'd like to say, hey, let's remove the restrictions on our public. Um, if it comes to time again, we can always put restrictions back. And then we send staff to negotiate with, uh, water conveyance program. And that would be, um, I'd like to pull this item, uh, for, to vote on separately, if possible. Uh, yeah, because I'd like to add to it that we're gonna, uh, take away the raw restrictions. What's that?
We'll need, um, we'll need to pull this item, I believe.
It's a nice try, but you have to-
Yeah? There wasn't any good enough nexus? Okay, so, I'd like to get the, at least the council and the staff on board with saying that we can bring an item back to remove the restrictions and at the same time sending staff out, uh, to negotiate with the water con, uh, the water, um, conveyance.
Yes.
Good evening. Hi, I'm Sarah Wolf. I'm with the Pleasant Valley Water Conveyance Partners. Um, and I just wanna clarify that, um, there's two components to it, and one of which is of a very timely manner. Um, the first component is that the city has wheeled the water for us, that we're bringing in from the outside to utilize here in this area. And so we pay you a, a service fee for bringing that water in for us. It's our own water supply, but you provide the contract and the service, the mechanism for us bringing it in. That, the water year has started, irrigation is beginning, even though things are still fairly wet, we are turning on pumps for recharge, not pumps, we're turning on, um, irrigation systems for recharge right now, and we are ready to start moving water. So to wait another month, we'll lose a month of being able to move that water in here. So that particular component is very critical time-wise. The issue of buying water from the city, um, that is one, you know, that is not as timely. I think the city in the past, the way we've worked it, we don't purchase water from the city until the city gets past a critical point that they know they have enough water supply to meet all of their needs. And so we don't even begin discussions on purchasing water with the city, from the city, until you're past those points. So that part of it, I, I understand, but the timeliness of being able to bring our own water supply into the area is somewhat critical at the moment.
Sarah, you're referring to the conveyance versus the purchase, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so there has been an arrangement in the past with the Pleasant Valley Conveyance Partners, not for the purchase of water, but rather just having a conveyance agreement to allow them to convey that water through our, through the canal. And that still comes with a twenty-five dollar margin on top, for every acre foot they convey through, still comes through with that twenty-five dollar margin.
So could we separate them?
I would, Mario, I know the way, the way the agreement's set up, but can we get, would the council be able to approve conveyance only? And then would, would we be able to just restructure the agreement to not include the purchase of water? And then we would separately negotiate that?
Yeah, so the resolution, I think, um, there's a resolution and then there's an agreement that goes along with it. Um, I think if the council wanted to do that, they could just give us instruction to, to modify that as, um, like per your direction. Um, and then we can go back and we can work with Sarah to modify the language to separate out those two issues.
Does that accept all the staff?
Yeah, I think that's, that's just us being a partner with our, with our members around the, the community. Um, it covers our costs to, I mean, any conveyance fee, any, any fee that we have to pay to move water, um, it was covered plus the twenty-five dollar margin on top of that. So for every acre foot they move, they just move to their, through the system, we're making twenty-five dollars an acre foot, and it's just basically like an administrative fee.
So then you guys could approve that portion of it. So my motion would be to approve that portion of it, and then also to give staff the ability to negotiate-
The price of our contracted water for the purchase, our contracted water, yes.
And then to bring back something that says that, uh, we can remove the water restrictions.
The resolution and the agreement?
Uh, that's fine.
Okay.
Alright, that's fine. Well, let's separate them out then. Let's do the, approve the water, uh, uh, conveyance and then, uh, move forward with staff, uh, uh, with the negotiating of the price. Uh, so the wheeling would work and then the price we'd send staff, uh, to negotiate with.
Does that work for you?
Yes, so, that works for us. And I just, I mean, I'm just kinda taking some free time here, but just, I wanted to tell the city, I mean, we really are committed to working with the city going forward. You know, I know that the city doesn't have any well water and it's not something you wanna turn to, but in the times of extreme drought situations, I mean, we're intending to do recharge in the basin and we'd love to partner with you on some long-term projects. And so, I just wanna reiterate that we're here to be a partner and, um, we really appreciate the service the city gives us with the ability to bring this water in.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we need to vote on this one separately right now, before we?
Um, you don't need to do it separate. Can I, can I, because we have a lot going on, can I read out what I think is, is available? So we have, um, up for approval would be number one, number two, four, five, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, um, thirteen was previously approved, fifteen, sixteen with modifications from Councilman Vosberg, seventeen and twenty, with eighteen and nineteen to follow.
Okay. Um, then we'll go ahead and move on to the next item real quick then, so we can get this taken care of. So we got, uh, item number five eighteen, Councilman Vosberg.
So I'd need to abstain from eighteen and nineteen as I haven't, uh, uh, I haven't not got it measured. And so just to be on the safe side, I could abstain for both of those. So if you, if we could pass, uh, if it pleases the mayor, if we could pass the others, uh, by vote and then, uh, do the eighteen and nineteen separately, uh, I could step out for that.
Now, quick question for Mario. Do I need to abstain myself as well for both of these items, since I'm a, a board member at large, but I don't vote?
Uh, do you have any financial interest that's only your voting?
Only when I, they, I have a, uh, when I do sound or anything like that, that's, that's all I would get any money from. I don't benefit from it being there whatsoever.
It's only item nineteen?
Yeah, it's only for nineteen on this one.
Did you, no, cause you, uh, this was, this, this has already come up before last time.
Yes.
Yeah, and you, you didn't have to, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't have to on last, okay, I just wanna make sure. Cause the rest of it was, I know was already, and go. Okay, so let's go ahead and, uh, we'll go, all the items minus eighteen and nineteen, uh, do we have a motion to approve as read?
I'll make the motion to approve everything except for eighteen and nineteen with the modifications to sixteen.
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Councilman Vosberg?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
An aye vote aye. Okay, so we'll move on to, uh, eighteen and nineteen, section five, eighteen and nineteen.
I'm gonna abstain for both of those.
I'll make the motion to approve eighteen and nineteen.
I'll sec, I'll second. We have a roll call, please?
Councilman Atkinson?
Aye.
Mayor Horn?
Aye.
Councilman Hedgecock?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Ramirez?
Aye.
Make sure we didn't lose some sound. Okay, our next item is, uh, ordinance, uh, item six, ordinance, presentation, discussion, potential action items. Our first one is fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, proposed budget discussion and direction. Mai Vang, financial director.
Thank you. So, um, this item on the agenda is the first draft of the operational expenses for the budget for next fiscal year. Within the staff report, there's some information about changes. There's a summary for all the different funds, and then as you scroll down, Mai has prepared some budget highlights. So, the things that are listed as budget highlights are things that would be in addition to what, um, the operational expenses are in the current fiscal year. So if there's no changes, it's not listed as a budget highlight, or if it's a minimal change, it's not listed. Um, you're not approving this tonight, you're just giving staff direction. So, for the public's information, the way that we bring the budget is, the first draft is just operational expenses. So council gets it in a chunk to be able to see our operational expenses from one year to the next. Um, and they can provide direction on operational expenses. At the next council meeting, then they will see personnel expenses for next fiscal year and be able to provide direction specifically on personnel. The meeting after that is when revenue projections are in, so that's the first time they get to see like a full budget picture, and they can still give direction on anything at that time. And then it will generally come back to them a second time, which would be the second meeting in May. And then it will come back a third time, which would be that first meeting in June, and that's generally when the budget would be adopted. So if we reviewed the highlights, um, that staff has listed in the operational expenses that stand out as being different from the current fiscal year to the upcoming fiscal year, uh, one of the items is a GIS to accurately map the land for water, sewer and gas projects in the amount of thirty thousand dollars. To complete all medians with drought-resistant landscaping and ground cover for two hundred thousand dollars. The purchase of a type three fire apparatus with revenue received from OES in the amount of four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. The contract that was approved mid-budget year with retail strategies to bring new businesses into the city at the amount of fifty-seven thousand seven hundred. Procuring chemicals to treat water to ensure the safety of use within the community in the amount of six hundred and seven thousand dollars. Purchasing ten hydrants and five valves for one hundred thousand dollars. Purchasing a soft start for the pump house for one hundred thousand dollars. Maintaining the Westlands Kalinga Canal for two hundred and ten thousand four hundred dollars, which includes four thousand acre feet of treated and twelve hundred and sixty acre feet of untreated and at forty dollars of acre foot of water. And then the Centennial on Sandalwood Park Improvement Projects for one hundred thousand dollars. Sidewalk and Path of Travel Improvement Projects for ninety-five thousand dollars. And the Trail Maintenance and Constructions in several segments for a cost of two million nine hundred and sixty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars. Um, these are not all general fund expenses, most are actually not general fund expenses. Um, there is a budget document that's attached that everybody has access to, and at this point, we are just highlighting, uh, the changes that are recommended for next year. And again, when you see the full budget picture and if there's things that you wanna cut, or if there's things you wanna cut now, or you wanna add to, you can do that now, or you can wait until you see the full budget picture.
Counsel.
So I'm gonna be the unpopular one. I would like to temporarily freeze all open positions that are not filled, coming from the general fund, except the part-time animal control officer until further notice, until we see how, uh, the budget's going to look.
How many non-safety personnel openings do you have?
Uh, the non-safety aren't paid through the general fund, so they won't be impacted, but we currently have five vacancies. We only have one filled, well, we have two filled, one is in the process of being promoted, so then, um, there's a total of six, so we'll have five vacancies. But they're paid from IGT, so they wouldn't be impacted.
Right. Um, to clarify, this is, would only be from general fund, uh, expenses. And the reasoning is because, uh, I wanna make sure that we aren't gonna go back down into the hole. And if we have positions open now, and then we're gonna do the budget within the next couple months, I wanna make sure that, uh, we don't get somebody hired. And then if the budget looks really bad, we would have to turn around and, and, uh, terminate positions and that hurts people's livelihood. And, uh, so, you know, it's better to just freeze now, if you ask me, than have to do that in the future.
And how many openings are there at the police department? Police officers, what about dispatch?
Two officers and- And a dispatcher.
Okay.
And just to be clear, I'm not talking about terminating positions, I'm just talking about freezing until we find out where the budget is going to lead us.
Well, it shouldn't have- Well, it shouldn't affect either one of their budgets, correct?
Well, it would affect, it would freeze the two, the two positions from the PD until we find out where the budget is because, so what I've seen in the past is, is that we've had situations where we look at the budget right now, people that pay attention to the numbers, and ahead of time, we can see that next year, that we are going to be going into the negatives. And that we aren't going to have any real way to get out of that situation. And so then come budget time and it comes time to terminate positions if we're in that, in that boat, which would always be my case, rather than going down the hill of 4.1 million in debt, which is where we came from, with a million dollars a year adding on top of that. That's where we were, that's where we started. And that was the absolute worst thing in history to have to do for, to me to be on this side of the table, to watch people's livelihoods destroyed. And so to me, it's a much better deal to be cautious and not do that ever, if we can stop it. And so this is out of caution and I don't think a couple of months is going to make that big of a difference.
It really wouldn't be a couple of months, it would be four weeks roughly, because you'll see the full budget picture May 4th. So at that point, you can continue to freeze them or eliminate them at that time if you chose to. But really, you'd see the full budget picture May 4th.
There we go.
Are we good to freeze?
Question for Chief Garza, the two officers and dispatch, that's already been budgeted, correct? It's not, we're not adding on to it for the next year, it's already been budgeted.
That's correct, you approved those positions already.
Okay, so there wouldn't be any change to you either then? There just wouldn't be any additional until we have the funds?
No, he, he's saying not to hire anyone to fill those positions.
Absolutely, because those people would be budgeted for the next year's budget as well, defaultly, when she goes to the personnel. And those, and positions that, I'm, I've looked at the situation that we're in. I don't want to tell people prematurely, I want it to come from the city. But the city is not taking in the revenue that we thought we would take in, in my personal opinion. And so if the situation comes down to going downhill, the choices that we get at that point in time are to continue to go downhill or to eliminate people that are fully employed. And let me tell you, it's better to not eliminate people that are fully employed here. Just my personal opinion, I've been down this road, it's hard. And it, and here's the thing, it doesn't stop, it just continues. You know, the, the council that I was in, that, they had been in that boat for the last, I think, three years, four years? And they didn't stop it, they just kept going down, down and down, because no one wanted to get rid of anybody. Because no one ever wants to get rid of anybody, but at some point in time, you got to take the Band-Aid off and you got to stop it. And so I'm trying to stop it before it starts, because we don't want to go down that road, I'm just, we don't.
So I've seen the numbers as well, and I agree with Councilman Vosberg. I remember being in debt, I remember how hard it was to climb out of debt. And our current trajectory appears as though we will probably be in the red this year. And I did not want to follow that with being in the red next year. So I'm good with it right now. The problem with the previous councils is they didn't put on a tourniquet when we were bleeding out. And we continued to bleed and eventually that tourniquet had to be applied and it hurt. So I'd rather do small Band-Aids here and there and protect the city from going into severe debt than continuing to hire and going into farther and farther debt.
That's hiring animal control too, right?
So that would be allowing the animal control position, because we currently don't have an animal control position. That would, but it would only be the part-time. It wouldn't be, the, the full-time position that we had put forward was going to be a budgetary item in anyways.
For next fiscal year.
For next fiscal year. And so I'm just asking that we continue to allow that part-time person, because we currently have no one in that position. And we do have someone that's went, that, that is going to be hired, is that correct?
Yeah, so we're just waiting on her physical results, which we should have Monday.
Right. So that's why, I'm, I'm not trying to like take away things from the city, I'm just trying to say, hey, if we have positions that are not already, have bodies in them, let's try and, you know, soften the blow if there is going to be something. If, if, if not, and we're, we look good, then hey, perfect. But, you know, we do have a reserve, but I think people want to use the reserve to try and fix the city. Try and fix things that are wrong with the city, infrastructure, things like that. You know, and if we spend it on personnel and we're going to go downhill and then we're constantly covering that to cover the personnel costs, that, that money will disappear quickly.
Okay, there's another issue with that. If we end up not hiring the two officers, we've got two different positions during the day that will not have that extra coverage. Everything that's been going on lately, and I, I, I know, I've been on a lot of ride-alongs, I don't know if you guys have or not. But some of the issues that they're having, they're starting to take care of, they're starting to catch up. They've been able to get some of these gangs and stuff, the guns and drugs and stuff off the street, just in the last two weeks, they've gotten quite a bit of them. But without those two extra officers, we lose an extra set of eyes each shift. I, I really don't think we should do it. We can, we can always adjust the reserve money that we have for the reserves, they have a couple of positions, we can always adjust that, put it towards an officer.
We're only freezing for a month here, until we see what the numbers look like. And that's what I would argue, is this is only for a month, till May what?
Fourth.
May 4th. Let's take a look at the numbers and we can go from there. If it justifies us hiring two more, then we can justify, or we can hire two more then. But coming from the two people who are up here during the times when we were millions of dollars in debt, it was very difficult to get out of it and we made very difficult decisions and we're heading down that same direction that we did before. And if we don't take action now, we're going to be making those very hard decisions in the future again.
Right, and when it, when it comes down to it, if we don't have the money, we're going to have to, we're going to have to terminate people anyways. And the, the people that, there's nowhere else to terminate. And that's a cruddy thing, but that's where it has to come from. I mean, unless, unless we're going to get a majority of the council that's going to be willing to go down the debt hole again, which if that's the case, I will be very frustrated and unhappy with that. Because that's not where we need, that's not a, a healthy city. That doesn't do good things for our city. And so, I mean, every time, last budget we listened to, I pleaded that we shouldn't accept those positions in the first place. I was here, it's on tape. I begged you guys not to. I said, please don't do this, please don't hire those groundskeepers, please don't hire these other positions. I said, we're going to be in a bad boat. And here we are. And so, yeah, this is where it's going to come down to. And, you know, it's, it's, it's not anyone's fault, it's just the person, the people that are up here having to make these decisions. And it'd be a lot easier to make decisions for people that aren't employed than, than people that are currently employed. And so I think that's where this lies. And I mean, you know, maybe we'll see the budget and it'll be different. But from the last time that we heard the budget, it was, hey, we can't cut anything, we've cut everything humanly possible and this is where we're at. And so I'm expecting that that's where we're going to be again. I'm expecting to hear those exact same words come out.
And if we look at this, what we have right in front of us, it says, this is an increase of approximately 24% from the previous year. So we're continuing to go down that budget debt hole. So I'm, I'm in favor of freezing them for a month and seeing what it looks like next month.
What, what does accounting? We, what do you think?
Hi. What did I think?
Yeah.
The fund balance for the general fund is actually a lot healthier. However, I'm not saying that it is in a great shape. We have a fund balance for the general fund of 3.7 million. But what I am also seeing is that our expense is exceeding our revenue for the past several years. So I am concerned about that, but I think that the longer time I have with the city, then the better I would be able to give you guys a better perspective of where we are actually headed. But with that little information, you kind of know where we're kind of going with it.
And that's really all I'm asking, is that we give her time to get to that place. When we get to those final budget numbers, which will, will be shortly, then we'll understand and she'll understand and she'll have a better answer for us. I'm 100% a public safety supporter. I, I know we need all these positions, whether we can afford them and whether we need them are two different things. And whether or not this particular budget allows for what we want and what we need are always different as well. And so I'm just saying, let's give her some time to figure this out and let's, you know, it's just, it's really hard.
I mean, if our, if our revenue, our, our expenses are exceeding our revenue, that means we're deficit spending and I refuse to do that. So that's where I stand.
Chief, what's the impact with, with holding off a month?
Well, we currently have on the, we do have a tech person in background right now for the position. And we have several candidates are applying for the officer position. So the impact, again, it would just reduce our staffing in the field.
So we can continue to make these, or push these people through the process and just not hire them, right?
Correct.
We, we can, but we would be spending money on their background, their psyche valve, their physical. And then, I mean, we can, if that's the direction of the council, and then just not give them a start date, or we can wait and not spend any money on them. We know where the budget is.
I'd say continue.
I'm, I'm fine with continuing the process and just not giving a start date until we understand the budget. I mean, I'm hoping we can wheel and deal and make this all happen. I'm hoping that we can look through all the accounts and all the stuff and make it to where that, hey, we don't have to, you know, we can have your positions that you want and that we don't have to move in a, in a, in a bad, you know, position. That's my hope, but what I'm seeing on paper and what I'm seeing from looking from the revenues and expenses, it's not looking like that. And so I don't, I'm cautionary, because I've been on the, the side of the boat where, you know, people were very unhappy and I would have been too. And so I'm just saying, by being cautious, it's, I don't think it's going to cost us anything.
If we're still taking applicants for the police officers and we only have one person in the process right now, like you said, then just keep taking applicants. I mean, it's not going to push it out and this is just a discussion tonight, correct?
Correct, and then we are just looking for some sort of direction from the council if you choose to give us direction tonight. Otherwise, the April 20th meeting, you'll see the personnel expenses.
Yeah, I think that's what we're all looking for is more numbers. So we're not, it's not like we're hiring anybody today anyway. So we, we need to keep the city safe, so continue trying to find them. And when the budget comes out, we can make that choice. Does that make everybody happy?
So we, we're just going to table this off until the next meeting, or you want to wait until May?
So what I have down is the direction of the council was basically the consensus of the three at the end that will temporarily freeze positions in the general fund with the exception of part-time animal control. And we'll still move people through the process, we just won't give anyone a start date until at least the May 4th meeting, when you have a full budget picture.
It's going to take that long to get them ready to start anyway, right? Yeah, so I mean, that, that works, it's not like we're getting rid of anybody. And we'll know what we have to spend.
Does I need a motion?
No, I just need a direction, I got it.
That's my direction. I have spoken.
We'll go ahead and move on to the next item. Discussion, direction and potential action regarding filing an anticipated city council vacancy for District One. Marissa.
Thank you. So Councilman Atkinson had requested a future agenda item to discuss filling his District One City Council seat upon his anticipated resignation. The staff recommendation would be for the council to appoint someone into that position, rather than holding a costly special election. We don't have an official resignation from the councilman yet, but he did mention during the last meeting, it would be around mid-June. And so this item on the agenda allows council to discuss plans to fill the anticipated vacancy and provide any direction to staff if you so choose. So you may choose to hold a special election, which we don't recommend. You may choose to appoint a community member who meets the requirements for living in District One. And those are really your two options. And should you choose to appoint someone, you can do a number of things. You can consider those who ran for the seat at the last election. You can advertise for a set period of time and consider any memos of interest. You can make nominations. You can ask any interested person to attend a council meeting and publicly state their interest, or any combination of the above.
Just my opinion, I was thinking that we could, I, I'm not, I don't want to do a special election, I think that would be dumb, too costly. So I think we should appoint somebody, put it out there for 14, 30 days, whatever you guys want to do. And we can all come to an agreement on who we want to appoint.
Is there any way we can ask the, the two people, the two others that ran for the position and see if they would like it first, before we move on to, to public and see if anybody else would like to go for the position and see if they would like it?
Yes, but we need direction of the council, because now two council members have said two different things. So we'll need direction from a majority of the council.
So I'd like to appoint Hilda Crawford. Sorry, Hilda. No, so I, I think, I think the fairest way, which we've done in the past, is to open it up for everybody. And to, you know, because if, if the council agrees that the persons that were on the, on the, the last, you know, if they, if those people are in the mix with others, it's not going to make a difference, it's going to take three of us to agree anyways. And I would rather bring everyone in and just do it once, that way we can get it over with, than just bring in two people and then just not agree and then have to bring in, and call more people. And then that just takes a while. And plus, then it kind of singles those two people out. And so I would like to see if we could give a 30-day notice, make it in the paper, put it out there on social media and then have the people fill out an application and then bring in the applications and then council also be able to ask them questions. Give them about five or 10 minutes to, to, to tell us what their qualifications are and why they would like to do it, and then have council be able to ask them questions and then entertain motions. That would be my suggestion.
Right. So, I mean, that's the way council's done in the past, the previous two people who ran did not win, so I would say open it up to everybody. That, that would be my, my recommendation and that's how it has been in the past.
So you're wanting to hold it for 30 days and then have a debate?
For those who are interested, yes. So we may get only the two people who ran before as possible interest, or we may get five people who are possibly interested.
I'd like to have the previous two that ran as well, seat, or not seated, but put on the list, they've already met the requirements. They can fill out an additional informational questionnaire or something, part of the application. But I think they should already be included into it. We've already, we've already spent the money to put them on the ballot the, the first time and, and to prevent from having to do it again, I think we should at least add them in there.
That would, that would be their prerogative if they chose to.
If they would like to.
Yeah.
And just for clarification, I wouldn't really call it a debate, because they're not going to be debating each other. They would just be telling us what their qualifications are, allowing, giving them a time limit, five or 10 minutes, maybe 10 minutes, it's an important position. And then us being able to ask them questions afterwards and then move on to the next person. And then after they're completely done and we have all of the people who have wanted to speak, then we, then we would allow time for motions. And, you know, how that system works should probably be discussed as well, because sometimes it's whoever makes the first motion and then sometimes it's, hey, let's put all the motions on the table. And then let's work it that way. And so we may also want to bring that back with options on how that's going to work, to make sure that the council agrees on a, on a fair process for that as well.
Right. And, and there were a lot of qualified candidates who did not run, because one of us, the three that were up there, were running and they did not want to run a campaign against us. So just narrowing it down to this, just those two, I think is unfair to the rest of the district.
Well, and plus, like you say, we're, we're going to, it'll take three people anyways. It'll take three of us to vote them in. And if we just brought those two forward, I agree with you though, we should definitely invite those people to apply, just like everybody else, make sure that they're sent. I think to, on your behalf, let's make sure that we send the, the, those that did run, let's send them, you know, letters and say, hey, this has happened. And that way they're, make sure that they're notified, that way that they're, they are included. I agree with you on that.
Okay, so from what I gather, the suggestion is, is to hold it off for 30 days, which would be roughly the sixth of, of next month. Is there any way? Is there any way we can have, uh, have them all come in that are actually wanting to run on May eighteenth? That way it gives them a little bit of time to prepare.
Yes, if that's the direction of the council.
Is that okay? That gives thirty days plus two weeks.
I think, I think all the people should be talking in a workshop before the council meeting, so it's a little more informal than this setting. I think it'll be better, that way we can get more people in here and, and, uh, have it a, not a meeting per se, but a workshop beforehand, then we can vote on it afterwards.
Do that in like the thirty-day period?
It would, it would still, it would still just be noticed, but you're talking about maybe like a five-thirty or five o'clock, like workshop?
Yeah, the, the way we did the, the other stuff like the water, have them come in and speak at a workshop before the council meeting. That, on that eighteenth, if that's what Jim wants, I think that would, that would make it a little more informal and let people be a little more relaxed to talk.
I'd say a little bit earlier than, than five, five-thirty. Uh, I'd say we start at like four, four-thirty, that way if there's quite a few citizens that are here to run for that position, we can at least hear them all out.
So, how about we split the difference and go at five, cause that's when I get off work? And I think that's when the general population gets off work, and so I don't want, like, people not being able to show up because they, they, because they work. So how about if we split the difference and go five o'clock?
So if we do five o'clock, can we just give them five minutes to speak? Because if you have five people show up and you're giving them ten minutes, that'll run to five-fifty, so there won't be time for questions.
I'm fine with that.
We can, we can delay the start of the regular meeting if we need to. I mean, within, within reason, I mean, so if, if you need to start at five.
If we do it at five, I'll run here.
Yeah, we.
Right down the street.
We can start the regular meeting at six fifteen or six thirty if we, if we really needed to.
You know you can get a ticket for going too slow too, right? You know that, right? Okay, um, move on to the next item, announcements, uh, city manager.
I have none.
Council, any council? Um, any councilmen have any, uh, announcements? Okay, I have a few. Um, the first one is, uh, if you guys would like to go on a ride along, any of the citizens whatsoever, council included, um, you can go into the front office there at the dispatch at the police department, and they can get you the information on how to go about going on a ride along. If you've never been on one, I highly recommend it, highly recommend it. Your, yourself, you will be safe, they will take care of you, protect you. Um, the next one, we've got, on the seventeenth, uh, next Monday, we have Josh Babcock, uh, John Congressman Duarte's representative. He'll be here from, from now until they decide not to come anymore, the third Monday of each month. Here in City Hall, he'll be sitting right over there in that corner, uh, from opening until lunchtime. So if you guys would like to come in and voice your opinions or just talk, see what's going on, he's, that's what he's here for. He's eventually gonna set it up where he can come back on a second day during, I believe, that same week, or at least during the month, so he can catch the ones from lunchtime to closing. So that way, some of the ones that are working later, they, they can come in and actually be able to voice their opinions as well. Um, also, we've got another one, Congressman John Duarte will be here on May second. He's gonna be here doing a couple tours, and then I have a meeting with him as well. But he wants to know, uh, if there's any citizens that would like to come in, do a meet and greet with him, uh, please let myself or Marissa or any of the council know right away. That way we can get you the location of where it's actually gonna be. Uh, the more we have, the better, and he's here to listen to all concerns.
Put that announcement on the city website.
We can do that, and I, the, I'm sure the chamber would be willing to do that too. Okay, let's see. Um, another thing, if, if, I've had a few citizens come and talk to me lately. Uh, if, if any of the citizens, doesn't matter what it's about, if you guys would like to discuss anything with me or just sit down and talk, uh, I have, I'll have my information right up here as soon as the meeting's done, if you guys would like to grab a card. That way you have my email and my phone number. You know, you might have some different insights, I know a lot of people don't like talking in front of people. So it might be a way to at least do a one-on-one for any concerns. Um, next, out there in the front office, about a month, month and a half ago, um, I had, uh, city manager got some information for the Marjory Mason Center for domestic violence. Uh, believe the police department has it as well for the information flyers, and I believe they have the scheduling and information for AA and NA as well, right? The Alcohol Anonymous and Narcanon? Okay, so if you guys need any information for that, uh, most of it's, it's, uh, it's all sitting, I believe, right where you pay your bills for the city, for your water. So if you need the information, it's right there at any time, or you can call, uh, call either the city or the police department, they can get you the information, I'm sure, as well. So let's move on, that's all I had, for the next one is, uh, oh wait, no, I'm wrong, I got one more. This Saturday, eleven o'clock, across the street from the Elks over on Cambridge. At eleven o'clock, the gates will open up at ten, the Easter egg hunt for all the kids will be out there. They'll have the fire department, the police department, the CHP, and a bunch of, uh, walking characters around. There'll be a squirrel, a rabbit, they've got Chipper from the CHP. I don't know if McGruff will be there, we haven't seen McGruff in a couple years, but we might see him sooner or later. So, uh, all for the kids, we, we've got a special section for special needs, and up to, I believe, teenagers. So the next one, uh, future agenda items, are there any future agenda items? Just the one? Go ahead, Sean.
I just wanna make an announcement that, um, finally, um, due to all the weather and delays, uh, they should be starting construction on the sidewalks in front of the fire department on Elm Avenue on Monday. So we'll start seeing tree removal, and then they'll be demoing out all the sidewalks, and then we'll be seeing new trees and sidewalks installed, so. Uh, the contract was approved a long time ago as part of some of the improvements we did on Third Street and over on, I think, Jefferson Street. Um, but there was some, there was a lot of delays in, um, obtaining the encroachment permit from Caltrans, so we have secured that, and we're able to move forward, um, with that, so we should see some movement next week.
Yes, adding to that right there, Elm Street, all the gravel, I'm sure you've all seen it heading into town and out of town. All the gravel that's been pulled up from all these rains right here, I talked to Caltrans last week, they're working on coming and actually doing a sweep. So they can clean all that gravel up there, cause it's causing cracked windshields and people to slide through intersections, and, or peeling out as they're trying to go because there's no traction. So they're, they're, they're working on that right now to get that cleaned up. Are there any more announcements?
I just wanna say, um, um, thank you to all the staff, you guys have been doing a great job. Even though, you know, it was a nice rainy season, and I predicted it, remember? So, um, anyways, you guys have been doing a great job, fire, police, staff, you guys are on top of it, and you guys are the backbone of, of us. So, you know, I just wanna thank you guys so much, all the time that, what you guys do. I don't think a lot of people out in the public realize the stress and the work and the hours that you guys, you know, you know, put in. Um, Ms. Jensen, a lot of times she says, you know, late, late hours to get things done, and, and, you know, I know, we appreciate it. And, um, that's my thing, and for future agendas, I would really like to work and see if we could get the, the school to either, a representative to come in or for something with all these fights that are happening. We don't wanna be the focus of this state for this, our little peaceful town. I really wanna get with the school to see what can we do or we could offer something, because it's getting really, really bad, and I don't wanna see no student or anybody get hurt, or no staff get hurt because we could have had the chance to do something.
Okay, any other, uh, future agenda items?
Yeah, I guess it's an appropriate time to talk about removing the water restrictions. Uh, but at the same time, um, I would also like to have staff come up with some kind of, uh, water conservation tips at the same time. So not only will we be removing the restrictions, but we'll also be telling people like, hey, you know, just don't turn on your hose and run it right down the street, that's probably not the best idea, you know, so things like that. Um, that's one agenda item, and the second is, um, I have, over the past, I would say, last time I was in council, I was working on three different projects for that airport, and I would like to continue now working on those projects. And one of them is shift sector, I wanna bring them back. Uh, it's constantly being told we can't, we don't know how, we don't meet the deadlines, we can't have the goals because of the feds and because of the runways. But you know, there was no vision that was easy. And I've just la- spent last night watching the old shift sector videos, and they really put Kalinga on the map, they really did. They did at least nine videos that they focused strictly on Kalinga, and what, and hundreds of cars, some of the most expensive cars in the world, million-dollar Bugattis, were right here, breaking world records. You know, that's an important thing, we're always looking for something to bring into the community. We have a captive market, they want to come, we just gotta figure it out. So that's one. The second one is, I wanna figure out how to get warehouses out there at that airport. I know we have a Fox, we have a, a Kit Fox thing to the right, I'd like to figure out how to, to move that, or how to work with that.
The one to the east, or the four of them to the east?
Whichever one that needs to be moved or worked with, in order to make it happen to where we could put warehouses out there if we had to buy property, uh, to make that happen. And then the third one is electric airplanes. There is a push in the Central Valley and across the nation for electric airplanes. And so what I'm asking is that staff allow, uh, myself to be able to work with, uh, some of these people in order to, uh, start working on a process to allow these types of things to happen. I'm not saying, hey, let's, anything would have to be approved by council, obviously. But I caution in even discussing such things, if I don't have the blessing of council to move forward, uh, with, with discussion. So that would be my future agenda, just being able to be able to, uh, be involved in that.
Uh, there will be, just for council's knowledge, there will be another item as a future agenda item that Councilman Hedgecock requested earlier, so it'll be on the February, or I'm sorry, February, it'll be on the April twentieth agenda, um, regarding some things out at the airport as well. So maybe since that's an interest of the two of you, you guys can both sort of focus on that. I know his focus was maybe on bringing in an airshow and getting some more, uh, long-term tenants out at the airport and getting that property to be utilized more.
So let me modify my agenda item then, let's say that we could create an ad hoc committee with myself and, uh, Councilman Hedgecock and the staff in order to, uh, kinda develop that, uh, airport property.
Yeah, we've been, I've been talking to some of the pilots out there and, uh, about the repairs that need to be made to where we can make it a viable asset, to where we can draw new business in. And we gotta get it repaired first in order to do that. And then once we get it repaired, having the airshow would be a good way to show it off and get more interest in using our airport. Been working on it.
Any more items? Okay, I'd like to get a, I have one, just one for now. The cost to either clean and repair the water fountain in front of City Hall, or possibly just removing it depending on the cost?
Uh, we don't need an agenda item, it's already in process.
Okay, with that being said, uh, we have two items for closed session. Next meeting will be on April twentieth, uh, six o'clock, uh, twenty-twenty-three. Thank you.